Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the October 28th Board Meeting to Order, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Present. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items that the Board would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay. Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Nierdowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. Okay, Item E, Discussion and Potential Action on Approval of Minutes. You have the minutes from September 23rd. It's September 23rd Board Meeting and the October 8th Special Board Meeting. Any questions, concerns, proposed changes to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes as presented?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Nierdowski.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Keenley. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Presentations. Mike Aliesha from Alliant Americas to discuss the property and casualty and workers' comp insurance for the township. Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and trustees. Before you, you should have a insurance proposal. This is the property and casualty portion of it. I have some decent news despite the market. Market conditions in property are exceptionally bad right now due to three years of record losses of catastrophic claims from the fires, the mudslides, earthquakes, and then the hurricanes in the southeast. We've been seeing around July, we saw about 20% on clean accounts to 40% to 50% rate increases on accounts that have some claims. The other issue going on in the insurance marketplace is the excess or umbrella marketplace. A large municipal umbrella carrier pulled out of the market, which there were not a lot. There's not a lot of municipal carriers. When that one large carrier pulls out, there's a void. Loss, supply and demand, low supply, higher prices. But I think we did an exceptional job this year. Your premium is slightly increasing from $59,095 to $62,163. There should be a premium summary page. I apologize for jumping ahead. It should be about page nine. So it's slightly jumping up. The biggest amounts are coming from your package, which includes those property as well as excess line. The big savings is coming from your workers' compensation, which is really funny. You know, comp's been really bad, especially in Illinois. Now it's getting healthier, but then we have issues in the property and the liability market are offsetting that. It's pretty crazy, but I am really happy to see comp going down. Property and excess next year, we do not expect things to be any better, if not worse, on the excess. So, you know, it's something to think about for the future when you're budgeting. Work comp, really happy with this very slight downward slide to some savings, so we're pretty excited about that. But part of the reason for your slight increase on the property and casualty side were your property values. You guys acquired a brand-new building of which your values, we had in a professional municipal appraiser, the carrier paid for it, appraise all your buildings, especially that new building. Your total values went up from $3.4 million and change to $12.1 million.
Is that replacement cost?
Yeah, that's that replacement cost. And speaking with Paul, I believe the market value that you guys received on the building was about five or six, and that's probably correct, but the cost to replace it with like or kind came in at about eight million. So that's where that big jump is. And that's where a big majority of your premium increase is coming from. And that's a-
Was that previous $3.4? Was that for all three properties or just for the one property?
That was for all your properties.
The $12.1 is just on the one property?
Is on all your properties, including this building. Now, when we pulled, when you guys formally hand over the keys to the owner of this building and move out, we will remove this building, and you should see a slight credit on it. This particular carrier does something interesting. If you add a building worth a million dollars or under, they won't charge you anything during the policy year. Same with if you take it off during the policy year, you're not gonna get any premium back. But this building, I think we had it, it should be in your-
Township Hall and Garage?
Township Hall and Garage, correct.
$2.391.
Right, with the contents values of $2.8. So we will get credit back for this, depending on the date it will be prorated. You'll get about the value of the premium, about $1.8 million.
Remind me, when does this, this, oh, this starts $12.1.
This is a $12.1. And if I understand it, you're probably gonna be in there maybe at the end of the year sometime, middle of December, so whenever that transition date is-
So that $12.1 contains insurance on this for a full year?
Yes, sir.
So your credit will be for the full year will be taken off? Well, it'd be prorated, because we'll probably have a month of premium on there. Well, a month of premiums on there, okay.
For that particular building.
You don't have the other properties on Golf Road or up in Elk Grove on here, do you?
On Golf?
Those are all removed. That was under the previous policy.
Oh, yeah, those were all removed, and I believe we removed them last year.
Right.
Yeah, and there was significant premium savings last year.
I'm just trying to understand the comparison. $3.4, did that include those?
No.
No, okay. You removed those, so it's an apples-to-apples comparison?
Yeah, so it's an apples-to-apples, yes, sir.
So then, next year, with this property removed, would we suspect to see a slight downturn?
Yeah, very slight. You're moving $2.8 million off of $12.1 million, so it's like right under 20% or so. And when we're dealing with property, we're probably dealing with between 10 and 15,000 or 1,000. So it's probably a thousand, 2,000 bucks, somewhere. It's probably south of 2,000, I would see a savings, sending apples to apples. I could tell you the exact amount when we remove it, and in my direct, once I find out the day you remove it, I'll send it to the carrier, get the proration factor, and then send that to Paul, and I can tell you exactly what the annual premium was for that building, what we're getting back as well. Other things, any questions regarding property? Couple more bullet points. Your auto, another factor to the increase this year is you had some auto claims this year to the tune of $38,871. There is a claim summary within the proposal. It looks like you had five claims this current year, of which the total incurred, once the claims are all settled out and paid, it's gonna come to about $38,871. So that also affected your premium this year. And then some new things that the carrier's adding on to their policy that's included in your premium is a $500,000 deadly weapon response limit with no deductible, and they're also including a $100,000 cyber insecurity limit with a $5,000 deductible on there. All very necessary coverages, unfortunately, that we should have. Any questions?
Yeah, you said that the premium is $59,095?
That's the expiring?
Is that the expiring?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it's $62,163, okay.
Yes, sir. And that includes all lines, property casualty, and workers' comp.
And the $500,000 that was added, I know the $100,000 was cyber insecurity, and the $500,000 was for?
Deadly weapon response.
Okay.
Like active shooter.
And how does that, is that a liability, or what is that?
It's more of a voluntary coverage. It is on page-
I mean, what does that, what does that mean? What does it cover?
Sure. I'm gonna direct you to page 21. So what it is, is it provides coverage in the event of a deadly weapon, could be knife, could be gun, could be vehicle, or anything else. And what this is, is these are voluntary payments for funeral, for counseling. These are things you do not have to do, that you voluntarily do to possibly prevent a suit. Now, carriers are, some are moving away, some are given nominal amounts. For this to move forward, it needs to be deemed, what involuntary means, is the court needs to deem the township negligent in one of these type of events. How are you negligent? I mean, you know, you have lock, you have cameras, I mean, with the exception of putting full-time security and metal detectors, there's really nothing you can do. So that's where they come up with this voluntary versus involuntary. Northern Illinois, from what I understand, there were no payments made at all for anything. And this is where the carrier's going to limit it to, some carriers do a million, some nothing, some are gonna just throw this half a million in, and, you know, just to help out in the event of this. Other carriers are taking the position, we're not offering anything. We want the courts to decide that we were negligent.
So this doesn't require negligence? This is, when you say voluntary, on the Board's part or on the insurance company's?
Well, what would happen is the Board and staff would work with the carrier to determine in the event that we would like to pay X amount for funeral costs, we would like to pay X amount for counseling services for people to come in and talk to our employees in the event of something like this. There's a quarter million dollar sum limit for demolition of the building. Sandy Hook demolished their whole building, which I don't believe insurance paid for a rebuild on that. I don't know any triggers that would have allowed that. Here, they're putting it in there that, you know, here's a quarter million, get rid of this particular part of the building, or just assistance with it. It will not pay for the reconstruction of a new building if indeed you wanted to demolish the whole building. It also includes the, within that sub-limit for memorialization, a memorial in front of the building or something like that.
This is, this is before the courts would have even been involved?
This is all voluntary.
If we decided voluntarily to, okay.
Yes, exactly. Thankfully, I don't have experience with this. I don't, not a lot of people do, thankfully. And first-party property damage, if holes in the wall, and, as you can see, I really don't like talking about this, because it's unfortunate that we have to, but it would pay for any damage from a projectile into the wall to patch it, or something like that as well.
One other question is on the cybersecurity. Under the premium summary in comparison, I see that deadly weapon response coverage has been added, but I don't see that.
The cyber?
Yeah.
Did I not include it in there?
Under the premium summary in comparison, I don't see it. On page nine, or whatever it is.
You are correct. I'll write a note to Paul and advise that coverage is included within the premium.
It's already included in the premium?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it doesn't cost you a dime. They didn't itemize it out. They're throwing a nominal number in there.
And that's that note, that's included in the cost, right?
Yes, sir.
Good. Is there anything else, Mike?
No, sir.
All right, any questions for Mike?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Michael Baylen, come on down. I mean, before we start, are there any, I don't know if we, I mean, we can absolutely go through this again. I figured more, leave it open to any questions for Michael. So I don't know if there's any questions from the Board, or if you'd like Michael to review what we discussed last month.
Yeah, I'm happy to give a quick recap about what we talked about last month. So trustee, supervisor Sweeney, it's good to see everybody again. To kind of re, or to continue our conversation from last month, the medical insurance and the group vision insurance is renewing for the township beginning December 1. So I think today we'll talk mostly about the medical insurance side of things. But if everyone still has their packet from the September meeting, we're gonna open it up to Tab 5, Share. I put mine in a safe place. Supposedly, if I can find it, it's important. I do. I wanna read your notes. You want the actual booklet? Yeah. Sure. No, just the financials for it, yeah. So Tab 5 is the medical insurance financial part of it. So again, the renewal is December 1, which is coming up, and the renewal this year from Blue Cross Blue Shield is 12.4% if the township remains on an age-banded rating basis, and it would be 10.91% if the township moved to what's called a composite rated basis. So with age-banded rates, it's pretty self-explanatory, the older the individual, the more expensive the rate. Under a composite basis, Blue Cross takes a blended average of the existing age-banded rates and comes up with an employee-only rate, an employee-plus-spouse rate, children and family. So whether you're younger, whether you're 25, or whether you're in your 50s or 60s, the composite rates are gonna be the same for those folks.
So this is age-rated banding rate, is what we're using for the?
And currently, correct. So currently, the township has age-banded rates.
I'm sorry.
So currently, the township has age-banded rates.
In words, okay, in words, are we, I guess it's sort of misunderstood then, is, we currently have the age-rated, this is age-rated banding is the difference? No, no. So, we can continue, it's a, so, we can continue with age-rated, or we can move to composite, which is a blended age average, you know, blended average.
Right, so if I say age-banded or age-rated, I mean, I mean the same thing. Those mean the same thing. So that's the renewal. The differences from current, if the township were to take the renewal, are relatively minor. On Plan 1, the individual deductible would go up from $2,700 to $2,800. However, nobody's on that plan today. Then Plan 2, which is S534 PPO, that plan design would remain unchanged. And then for Plan 3, which is the Blue Options Plan, the only difference would be an unlimited out-of-pocket maximum for out-of-network care. So you'd still have a limit going to an in-network provider, but it would be unlimited for people seeking care from an out-of-network provider or an out-of-network doctor. If you flip to the next page, this is Blue Cross Blue Shield Option 1. So the increase, which is listed towards the bottom, is still the same as the renewal. And what I did here was, I replaced the Plan 1, because nobody's on it today anyway, and I put in an HMO. So an HMO is a very different concept from the plans that are offered currently. So with an HMO, what's good about an HMO is that the out-of-pocket costs are very low. There's a $0 deductible, the out-of-pocket costs are low. You actually get co-pays for seeing a doctor or picking up a prescription. With high deductible plans, which are Plan 2 and Plan 3, you would pay the discounted retail price for services, so having co-pays for doctors' visits and prescription drugs is a benefit enhancement to the staff. So those are the positives of an HMO. A couple negatives is, it just works a little bit differently. So if the township moved forward with an HMO, and if some employees decided to take it, they would need to designate themselves a primary care physician within Blue Cross's HMO network, and then coordinate all of their medical care through that one doctor. So it's a very different concept from having an open-ended PPO network where you can go wherever you want to go, whenever you want to go. On an HMO, your primary care provider is essentially your gatekeeper for healthcare.
This is Blue Precision HMO, so that's a certain set of doctors?
Correct, so that's the, that's the network. It's called the Blue Precision HMO Network.
But there are many different networks under Blue Cross Blue Shield?
There are. There's a handful. So an HMO would be a very different concept from the conversations we've had and renewals we've had in the past, but I think it's compelling.
These would be comparable.
So, one big reason for it is, it wouldn't be your most expensive plan, it wouldn't be your least expensive plan, it would be right in the middle. From the township perspective, the township couldn't offer an HSA seed contribution to an HMO, because it's not a qualified high-deductible plan. So at least from a, from a financial standpoint, that would save the township money for people enrolling into the HMO. And I think from the employees' perspective, having a plan with a $0 deductible, a low out-of-pocket, and co-pays is a pretty compelling story, pretty compelling statement.
One question I had on the Option 1, the, whatever you call it, the P506, the HMO, are, I think you had mentioned this last month, and now I'm drawing a blank, where does that fall in, as premium dollars, as far as what the monthly premium would be compared to the other two renewal plans?
Sure. So if you flip to the second page, or the third page, the one after, this outlines what the, what the cost would be if every employee took the HMO. Now that, now that's not gonna happen.
Right.
But the way that I look at it is, look at the composite rate. So for someone only covering themselves, the composite rate for the HMO plan is $6,9590 per month. If you flip backwards and compare that $6,95 to the composite rates for the two existing plans, Plan 2's-
So it's like in the middle?
Almost exactly in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the most expensive plan is at $7,931, the HMO would be at $6,9590, and then the Blue Options Plan is at $5,9921, so it would be right in the middle. For comparison's sake, we also did get a quote from United Healthcare. The United Healthcare numbers are firm, so there's no medical underwriting involved, but the rates are significantly higher than Blue Cross's current rates and their renewal rates. So if you look at the United Healthcare option, the plan benefits, anything in blue is a benefit enhancement from current, anything in red would be a benefit cut. So the plans are pretty competitive, the rates are not.
It's United, where is United?
The next page here, this is a snapshot of what the employer-employee contributions are articulated in terms of a percent. And then it also outlines what the HSA contributions are from the township to the employee. So for HSA contributions, they vary based on which plan somebody elects, and it's aligned to where if someone enrolls into a less expensive medical plan, they get a higher HSA contribution.
The G535, is that the one that nobody's on?
And then below that, you'll see what the percentage contributions are for, for the three plans. So the township picks up 50% of the additional cost to add dependents. If someone were to elect Plan 1, which is G535, township picks up 85%, the employee picks up 15. Then for S534 and S507, which are Plan 2 and Plan 3, the township picks up 95% of employee-only premium, and the employee picks up 5% of it. So taking those percentages and articulating them in dollars is the, is the next page. So this spreadsheet or graph here, so the top half outlines what the monthly costs are and the annual costs are in total, so build premium. Then you have Elk Grove's contribution in terms of dollars, and then the employees' collective contribution in terms of dollars. So right now, the township has invoiced $196,000 approximately per year, of which the township picks up $160,000 of it, and the employees pay about $35,000, $36,000 of it.
No.
And that's a snapshot of right now, where employees are and which plan they're on. Below that, you'll see what those dollars are if the employer-employee contribution percentages stay the same. Below that, you'll see what those dollars are if the employer-employee contribution percentages stay the same. So employees pay 15% for Plan One, 5% for Plan Two and Plan Three. And total dollars, or billed premium, goes up to $221,000, of which the township picks up $180,000 of it, and the employees pick up about $40,000 of it. So that assumes you take the renewal, and then the percentage contributions do not change. So I'm going kind of quickly here. Does anybody have any questions for me? I'm covering a lot of numbers. Then the last page here. So the top half is a snapshot of current, and then the bottom half assumes that we're going to change the employer-employee contribution split. So the bottom half of this page assumes that employees would start paying 10% for employee-only coverage for Plan Two and Plan Three. So that'd be an increase of 5% for the staff. And basically what that does is, it takes the annual increase in dollars and approximately cuts it in half. So the township picks up half, and the employees pick up half. So we'll still have a total spend of $221,000. Then under this scenario, with the 10%, the township's costs go up to $172,000 a year, and the employees' contribution goes up to about $48,000 a year. Now this also does not take into account if the HMO were added.
Right.
So this is just a snapshot in time. If, once we go through open enrollment, I'm sure we'll see some kind of movement with people going between plans. If we add the HMO, people could opt into the HMO. So these numbers will change a little bit, but I think that the essence of it is kind of what I wanted to, to talk about today.
Okay, great. Any questions for Michael?
Is this projected with the HMO?
This is, no. Nothing's projected with the HMO, no.
Is this projected if it stays the same?
He's providing, he's, yes, yes. This is, if it stays the same, the percentages, the cost share is the same.
It's the same plans.
Versus, from going from 5% to 10% on these two plans. But yes, the same plans. Okay. Any questions for Michael? All right, thank you, Mike.
Great, thank you.
Which 5% of both plans going from 5 to 10?
So he just, so the Plans Two and Three are currently at 5% employee.
Right.
So, he said, the first page was if it stayed the same, what the breakdown would be. And then the next would just hypothesize Plans Two and Three going from 5% to 10%.
Oh, okay. Without HMO being considered in there.
Right. Yep. All right. So we'll, we can talk, we'll talk more about that under Old Business. Moving down to reports, Assessor's Report, Connie?
You've all received a copy of my report. It has been busy this year with the triennial, as our numbers obviously reflect. Friday, I attended the Cook County Township Assessor's Meeting with Deputy Wagner, and one of the guest speakers provided a rather chilling description of what we went through during the county assessor's reassessment in the spring. They seemed to be totally enamored with their new mass appraisal system, and his explanation for what our taxpayers had to endure with the incorrect assessed values on condominiums, the major outliers that we saw in very concise, uniform neighborhoods. And so obviously, we were aware of these problems during that reassessment time. What concerned us was that during that appeals process, those appeals were submitted with what we saw to be exemplary evidence of overvaluation. However, what we saw in the resulting response from the county, we saw approximately, and right now, my numbers are still tentative. We saw approximately only a 10% reduction on people who appealed. That's staggeringly low. That's making an assumption that their program is foolproof. Well, as we saw, it wasn't foolproof. So during his discussion, I questioned him, because very often, depending upon the complexity of the appeal, we will suggest that perhaps the homeowner would like, or should get, a certified appraisal. That's a very high value integrity evidence. I mean, it's a certified appraisal. They have an ethical obligation, correct? So one would think that if with that appeal, that appraisal went through showing recent comparables, price per square foot, et cetera, et cetera, it should pretty much be a slam dunk, right? They were denying appraisals. I questioned the gentleman on it, and he said, well, you know, those can be fraudulent. Well, one of our assessors is an appraiser, and I watched his face just get red. And he said, you have just impugned an entire profession, who have a high ethical standard that they have to meet. So from that standpoint, we were furious that they were literally throwing out certified appraisals. So I said, well, okay, you're throwing out certified appraisals, what about sales? Current sales? I mean, that's the gold standard, right? What's going on in the market? Oh, he said, well, those, those don't really count, because, you know, if you have the same people in the same house, and it was 10 years ago, you know, the chemistry changes. Well, it was about at this time, I was about ready to launch my silverware at this gentleman. And he proceeded to do the same thing with price per square foot. I am horribly concerned, as are my colleagues, as to what is going on down at the Cook County Assessor's Office. They've embraced this new mass appraisal system, and the philosophy that we're hearing is so counterproductive to true market value that we are insisting on a meeting with Assessor Kegge next month. It's that bad. And we can only speak, from my office perspective, we can only speak to residential. God only knows what's going on with commercial. So I would like to have better news for you. But when you're looking at a 10% success rate on an appeal, that is unacceptable. Thank God for the Board of Review, because we're hoping to get some of those adjudicated down.
But, for the mass appraisal system discussion that you had, who was that with?
That was with the Cook County Assessor's Office, Mr. Robert Ross, I believe.
A representative of the Cook County Assessment. What was that meeting, where was that meeting?
It was the Cook County Township Assessor's Association. We meet in Oak Brook. But it is, it's depressing.
Thank you. Any questions for Connie? Okay, thank you. Clerk's Report, George?
I have the written report. I think it, there's a couple items in there, but you can, you can read them.
Okay. Any questions for George? Okay. Highway Commissioner's Report, Art?
I'd just like to say that 6 o'clock, Brent Miller said one of his models for Thursday and the Friday is four to five inches of snow, and if it happens, we're ready to go.
Okay.
Happy Halloween.
Can I give you my address? Can you get my driver?
I hired my son this year to drive.
Any questions for Art? Thank you. All right. Could I have a motion to accept the elected officials' reports as presented?
It's all moved.
Trusted Nurdowski, seconded by Trustee Graffia. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, no correspondence under Old Business. He had a proposal last month to create a full-time program support specialist. And to open up the discussion, again, just to refresh everyone's memory, this is for the administrative post at the west entrance of the new township building. This individual will be support for the social services, adult and family counseling. Departments on that side of the building also be a conduit for people coming in to use the food pantry as well on that side of the building. Trustee Saturn had, had a good question. A lot of this is, a lot of the description here was related to general assistance or social services. Because we know there's going to be support, but we, we're going to have to figure out how, what, how the administrative portion will look like, because we haven't had youth services and, and family, adult and family counseling in the building with everybody else. So the functions of that individual for those departments will be spelled out as we have a better idea of how that relationship will work and what their needs will be. But this is, is a supportive, support position for that side, for all those departments there. The salary, if approved, the salary would be shared out of all of those budgets. So the general assistance fund and then town fund, it would be broken out as well. And the anticipation is, you know, with the qualifications, you know, high school diploma, experience with basic office environment, and Microsoft's, you know, suite of products, be able to communicate, we're anticipating $15 an hour approximately. The board can finalize any salary changes based on that. And if I have an expectation that something needs to be increased, I'll come to the board. But that's generally where we're going to start, I think, for the qualifications here. I think that's sufficient.
And the individual would be included in, in health benefits and...
Yeah, 35 hours a week, yes, sir. Mm-hmm. 35 hours, yes.
The, the, the individual be used, I know for, you said for GA, for the youth and family services, adult family services, within, in town is included in that too?
All right. So this on the west, this is the administrative desk on the west side of the building. So it would be social services, youth services, adult and family counseling, and the food pantry. And then on the east side of, oh, and then the, then the, what's that, the lending closet as well?
And the, is the lending closet and food, is that under GA or is that under town?
Well, it, the food pantry is in, well, with the new law, I mean, it's, it's, it can be, it wasn't, it didn't, used to be under social services or general assistance. Now it can be included. But the lending closet is new. We originally set up, there are some unknowns, obviously with this position, how this will be all laid out, because of the both entrances. Because food, the social services and food pantry do have worked hand-in-hand. The direct report, as we see it, as of, as I see it, as of right now, will be the Director of General Assistance or Director of Social Services. But that could change depending on the needs of the position. The direct report, I'm anticipating being that, being Lisa, and then up through Lisa to Paul. But how that changes, we're just going to have to see the operation in action. Obviously, this is a new position.
And the same thing with the salary, that'll be, it'll be shared, but that'll be determined as you, as you decide.
Just like all salaries will be determined by the board. And I would say, as we're anticipating this, if it is general assistance-heavy, you know, we could, I mean, I would anticipate us waiting it that way too, and taking that, the salary heavier out of general assistance, if that's the case. All right. Any questions about this position?
Do we have four caseworkers now, plus Lisa?
We have three, and Lisa.
And youth services, would they be coming in, checking in through that area?
Yes. Yep, all, all, yeah, so this individual will be notified, because there'll be security doors that you can't get past. You can, you can get into the building and walk down the hall to the food pantry, but you can't get any deeper into the building than that, yeah. All, all, those other positions, youth, adult and family counseling, youth services, social services, will all be behind security doors. So everyone will need an escort, and that will, that individual will be, that administrative person will be the conduit to all those departments.
And the lending closet, is that like wheelchairs, canes, all those?
Yes. And that, that will actually, that will have an office situated behind the administrative desk there. And that, that administrative person will manage that. That's how we're anticipating that happening. Other questions? I'll open it up for discussion. I'm happy to answer any questions I'm able to. How would the board like to proceed? Is there a motion to approve this position with a $15 starting salary? $15 an hour starting salary?
It's all moved.
Moved by Trustee Graffia. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Trustee Keenly. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn?
Aye.
Trustee Nurdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Graffia?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Supervisor Schwaini?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. All right, health insurance. So, just walked through the numbers. I, I didn't have a chance to present this to everyone. I apologize. But just kind of, just reviewing what happened last year, kind of, I think it'll be a good starting place. So the board, I think, made, made a tough, well, the board did make a tough decision last year. Obviously, to stem the tide over. We started looking at longer period trends, going back to 2016 to 2018, and even, well, even going back to 2010 and 2011, when we switched to the high-deductible health plan. Saw some savings, and then incrementally, there were some increases. Essentially, in 2016, we were about where we were in 2010. So we had a nice run there of some savings. And then we started to see some increases. And then, and then when we came, when it came down to 2018, and discussing what '29 would look like, the board made a tough decision. Instead of changing the percentages for the health insurance premium, was to reduce the HSA dollars by each individual, by $500, to save about $9,500 or so. So help stem the tide of some of the increase in costs, because in 2019, as of this year, we're looking just rough value, 14% increase since 2016. Not bad, right? And we've kind of stemmed the tide. We've seen a jump now this year of, we've seen 12%, or so. So I'll just start with my suggestion, and we can open it up. I would like to see, before we make any other additional changes to premium share or HSA dollars, I would like to see how the, swapping out the HSA for the current, that top-tier plan.
The HMO.
Right, the HMO. I would like to see how that changes, what the employees do. And I would just put all three plans. I think the reason no one's choosing the highest-tier plan is because it's 15% cost share. So I'd like to see, in apples-to-apples comparison, put everything at 5%, see what happens, and see what our cost share is at the end of the year, and what happens next year on renewals as well. And I think at that point, we might have to, depending on our costs, might have to look at it across the board, increase in, in the premium share. But just from my perspective, I would like to see if we put in the HMO, what employees would do.
Are we taking out that one plan, then?
Yeah, it would be option one, so it would be the option one.
No one was taking.
No, no, so option, so just to be clear, option one on the renewals would be swapping out the HMO for the plan no one's using, and then continuing on with current plans two and three.
Okay, and five percent, five percent?
Ninety-five.
For the, for the?
Right, to kind, to try.
Across the board.
Right, to try to understand, get a better idea of what employees would choose and why they're choosing that, and then.
Does that keep in the plan that it would have, it would have been a fifteen percent contribution?
No, it would take that out.
Take that out, okay.
Because no one's using it anyway.
And then no HSA for the HMO?
There would be no HSA, so there would be some savings potentially there if people choose that, chose that plan. But I'm not anticipating, I would just, my thing is, I'm curious to see, we've, and I don't think, I think for the last two years, we haven't seen anybody, I think it was two years we haven't seen anybody use that plan. I'd have to go back and look. There was, was it first year no one had it?
But there was only like three.
Okay. So we'll see, and I'd just like to see a full year of how that would look and what the employees would choose. I think we are at some point going to have to increase that cost share to ten percent, maybe more, but I want to see with the HMO how that, how that changes our financial liability as far as it, so that's, that's at least my thought, my opinion, but I'll open it up to the board for, for that. So with that, please.
Do we have a cost comparison on that, with that, with that change?
No, because, no, because we don't know how many employees will choose that option. That's kind of what I want to find out, what will happen. If everyone has to, because really, at that point, you're choosing, you're choosing cost. If everything's at five percent, you're not, that's, you take that out of the equation. So we're trying to see what people, what employees would choose, if the cost share was the same, and then essentially, that silver plan, that middle plan, would ultimately be the more expensive plan, the HMO would be the second most expensive, and then you'd have that base plan.
You're not expecting with that change, a significant change in costs?
I don't, I don't know. I, there's not, I don't think there's going to be a significant cost, but, I mean, at least we can evaluate what the, you know, what the employee wants. I mean, and maybe the HMO's more attractive for some reason, maybe it's, maybe we just have to offer two plans, maybe there's just not a, you know, I don't know, but right now, I think we need to, it's trying to, trying to mess with too many variables right now, is just change this one variable and see what happens, and then we can incrementally make some changes.
And no one is on that other plan?
That's correct.
No, no one's been, oh, because?
And I thought it was two years, but yeah, just one year. This was the first year.
It's less on either HSA and more money towards, or to pay towards their premium.
Right. It's an, right, after a while, because of the same, essentially the same network, but yeah, you're paying out of process.
I think last year the deductible ended up like, before it was a lower deductible, but last year it was like the deductible wasn't even that much of a difference between the two plans, so it didn't make sense.
I think it's great to offer the HMO option, being someone who's been on Blue Cross HMO for twenty-two years with my family, and it's just nice to give them options. And he said that's kind of the middle cost, the HMO.
That would be the, yeah, that would jump down, yeah, that would be the middle cost.
Yeah, might as well get rid of a plan no one's using and give them another option because there's so many doctors here in the Blue Cross network.
Yeah, the Chicagoland area and the HMO, yeah, the HMO network in Chicago, the Chicagoland area is very strong, so.
So that, that proposed, the proposed platinum HMO is what you would swap, swap in? You would not consider, you would not, you were not pursuing that five to ten percent increase that was being?
No, I just, I think it's just that one variable, change the one variable by offering the, the three plans with the HMO changed for the gold, the five thirty-five gold HSA plan.
The five, five, ninety-five-five split. We, we don't, we don't really know what the cost comparison will be, but we're.
Well, we're not paying, we're not paying anything else, we're not paying out on the gold plan anyway.
Yeah.
We're not paying anything out on the gold plan. So we could, we could see, potentially see some cost saving. If individuals, employees move down from the silver plan to the HMO plan, or another plan, that's when you would see some cost savings. You would see it on some premium dollars, but then you'd also see it on the HSA dollars as well.
So the HMO premiums are less than?
They're, it's, it's less, it's less than the silver, the five, the five thirty-four, but it's more expensive than the silver five oh seven.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Okay. So I'll just make a, I'll make a motion to approve option one, which would include the HMO, and then the renewal on the silver five thirty-four and the silver five oh seven plans with HSA dollars for plans two and three, the two silver plans remaining the same.
And the contribution by the employee?
And, and the contributions for all three plans would be five percent.
And the, is HSA contribution for the other two plans stay same?
They would stay the same. And then, I'm sorry, and then the fifty percent for the family would remain the same. Does anybody need me to recap that motion? All right, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Saturn. Further discussion?
Who's, who's made the motion?
I did.
Sweeney, Saturn. Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nurdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right. After we approved the Reiki office furniture, office interiors as the bidder for the furniture at the new building, the assessor met with Vivian Bocas just to sort out any workstation particulars for the assessor's office. I wanted to, I laid them out on the agenda, just item by item, so we could discuss that, and we can go from there. One item from a meeting that we had today, looking for creative ways to solve space issues with the Sidwell maps. And if you remember, one of the offices in the assessor's office, that conference table's going to be pulled out, and a resource room is going to be added in its place. So that means a drafting board for the Sidwell maps and some filing cabinets, and then any time for any events or meetings with township officials, or meetings with property taxpayers in which the assessor's office needs to consult, they'll access the conference room down the hall. Kind of sum up where we're at, Connie?
Yeah.
Okay, so that being said, so the cost of having that conference table comes out, so keep that in mind as we move to discussions. At a later date, Connie has some things to decide based on dimensions and things with the drafting board that we're anticipating Reiki building. That'll come before the board sometime in November when those details are sorted out, but that's, so we're taking out a conference table, not that it's an apples-to-apples mix, but you'll take out that cost, and we'll be anticipating adding that cost in for the drafting table in November. Okay, so seven items here, we can go through and discuss. Two options, so the workstations would be the same as far as desk and return, the same as every other desk, but Connie had talked to Vivian about having two drawer laterals on the return of all their desks, the four workstations in the main area. If not then, instead of a box-box-file, which is, you know, a drawer, the two drawers, and then a file, a file drawer, having two file drawers, so, you know, a file-file, if it's not a two drawer lateral. So that's the first item to discuss whether or not the board wants to approve that. Connie, did you want to, I mean, did you want to discuss this item?
If there's any questions, you have.
No, I, me personally, I'll just, go ahead, Bob.
When, when we went out to bid, were these a part of the bid?
They were not.
Then what does that do as far as the bidding procedures are concerned?
I mean, these, I mean, we consider them add-ons to the cost, I mean, they would just.
So it would cost us more?
Sure.
But they weren't included in the original?
They weren't priced, they were all priced as the exact same workstation, correct?
Is that, is that, is that removing anything from the bid? Is that, does that remove the furniture from the bid?
Drawers on the workstation. We have applications, et cetera, and manuals that are stored there, but we were never questioned.
So then there are no file drawers on these workstations? The other ones that we purchased, there are no file drawers?
There's one.
There's one, we're simply adding one on the extension. We currently have two now.
I'm sorry, two what?
Two file drawers at a.
In the present office.
In the present.
Gotcha, okay.
Just a question on here too. So is this, is just this adding on to what was in the bid, or does this replace what was in the bid?
So it depends, it, it, well, it depends on what we do. It would be an add-on. So the price would be, from my understanding, would be minor. If it went from, you're talking, so right now, right, you have one, in, in one area of the desk on the return, at the end of the return, you have a box, box, like two drawers, and then a file, right? So the initial request was for a two drawer lateral, okay, which would, it's more than twice the width, the two drawer lateral.
Well, the ones that we have now, yeah.
Right.
Well, no, wait, 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 I'm sorry, may I interrupt, please? You were not brought into the discussion on these? Is that what I'm hearing?
Not at the beginning.
No, not at the beginning. We, we were, we went out to Reiki a week ago today and discussed the furnishings. I mean, we saw the drawings as far as conference tables and, and workstations, but for specifics, we really were not part of that conversation.
It seems to be, if this is what we have now, and this was what would work best, and it's not a huge outlay, that we should go with the two drawer laterals.
Yeah, a couple of things to clear up. I, you know, and maybe it was a miscommunication, and I'll take responsibility for it. When we were talking, when I was anticipating the conversation with Reiki post-bid approval, you know, I was anticipating, you know, things that dealt with ease of use of, like, the computer and interacting with your clients and doing their work, like hidden, hidden keyboards, some minor things like that. That's what I was anticipating. So if we were thinking different things, that's fine. I understand what we have now, and, and, fine, and I guess there's some merit to that. The only thing that I would talk about is, you know, I, storage, I mean, we're taking, and I don't know if this changed, you wanted four filing cabinets to take, or are you changing from?
If we're putting in millwork for the Sidwells, we don't need five cabinets moving. That's going back down to probably four.
Right. So that's what we originally talked about, so four tall ones with four drawers. Connie and her staff have gone through painstakingly to digitize files. They have, the assessor's office has purchased three quality scanners to continue to scan documents as they come in. And so I question, at some point, like, what's with, I just don't understand all the storage. I just, I don't.
First of all, let me explain. When we have taxpayers come in and apply for exemptions, certainly we do them electronically, but there's also a paper trail. Those all are kept for an entire year until we see that they're actually in the county computer. So that's, and we do the same thing with the appeals because we, you know, we can then, and after a year, fine, we can dispense with them, but for that year, I mean, what are they supposed to do, sit around in cardboard boxes? It's safer to have them, you know?
But you have scanners.
But that's what the, but that's what the filing cabinets are for, though.
That's, that's part of it, but we also have continuing education material. We have applications, we have all sorts. Every office has other things than just, you know?
But if you're, if you're scanning that piece of paper in?
We're scanning permits. We no longer scan sales because those are coming through Springfield now via the Department of Revenue to the county.
No, no, I'm saying that piece of paper that you just referred to, if you scan that in, there's no need to store it because you have it, and you can print it if it's necessary, and you can go back, should something get screwed up, you can go back and print it out.
All right, that's absolutely correct, trustee. However, the problem that we have with the county is that if we have them available, for example, during the exemption period, we can then, we continue to go back into that paper file and say, is this in the system? Is this in the system? If it's not in the system, we take that, we resend it, we fax it down to our liaison. But we've got to have some, you know, otherwise, what do we do? Do a list of what, you know, and then have to go into individual folders in the computer to try and find what we've already done? That's not a very practical way of doing it. You have to understand that part of the problem that we deal with is that, and I'll give you a classic example. We filed exemptions in January that were still not in the county computer in July, but as a service to our taxpayers, we continue to go through what we have filed for them, and at a period of time, it's still not in, we resend them again. There are times we're sending them four and five times.
Okay, but you have a scanner.
We have a scanner.
You can scan the stuff in.
Yes.
And you, let me, please, but you don't have some type of a program that would allow you to access it?
Well, you could pull it up, but not as to, I'd have to talk to James about that, but not to the extent of, okay, this is the body of work we've done, let's say, for thirty days. I, I, I can't access that. We put things in, those documents that were scanned are scanned into a folder with the permanent index number of the property. So we'd have to have some sort of program to say, okay, January first to January thirty-first, give me all documents.
Couldn't the program, couldn't the program be geared to the permanent index number?
Yes, but which ones did we file? That's the whole point.
Couldn't it be geared to the dates of filing?
It seems like, it just seems like this is a software systemic problem, is that you need to find, you need to find a software program that allows you to file it and sort it.
And then we have our permanent record obviously already scanned in, but for the taxpayers' protection, we keep the hard copy until we know it is appropriately inputted in the county system. I wish the county system were better. I hope we could directly input into the man frame. We're not allowed to do that.
Maybe we should look at making our system better.
Mike, how much would two drawer laterals for each workstation be?
Did we, did she provide that cost yet? I didn't see it. Okay, yeah, if you could go back, and I, I had not seen an email on it, but why don't we come back to, if everyone's okay coming back to this when Paul comes back? All right. Okay, so the second item, adding end tables to the waiting area for three, I'm just going to pass this down just to give you a kind of idea, and we were, as I said, we were just trying to figure out, in the, in the assessor's waiting area, there's three red boxes of where anticipating putting end tables were, are. I, I, I think, and I anticipate that these two, unless, Connie, unless you can tell me that they're wrong, would take up too much space getting by.
The one that I'm, the only one I'm interested in, my.
This one in the corner, and that's, and I agree with you, that's, that makes perfect sense to have something there. This one, this one in the corner where there's a void, where they come to an angle here where they, they meet, so. So, you want to look at that? Yeah.
Well, again, this is an add-on.
This is, yeah, just one end table.
Okay, so you're changing this from one, three to one?
Right.
Okay.
So any, any questions about that?
No.
Can I have a motion to approve one end table for the assessor's waiting area?
So moved?
Moved by trustee Graffia, seconded by trustee Saturn. Any discussion? All the, roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
And supervisor Sweeney.
Aye.
These all have to be done, they can't be packaged.
I, you know, I just, for clarification, I just wanted to have these all broken out. Just so it's, it's clear as day, just like we did at the other meeting. Just, this is another one that made perfect sense to me, seeing how the department operates. They're articulating arms, instead of pivoting the whole monitor, swinging the monitor on an articulating arm.
So that the customer would be able-
Absolutely. That makes perfect sense to me. I don't know if anybody had any questions, but this, the fifth, the fifth one comes because in Connie's office, it would be, it would have an articulating arm as well. I'm assuming for, if, if staff needs to use your office for that purpose, so. Can I have a motion to approve the articulating arms for five monitors for the five workstations?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Keenley.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Saturn. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, keyboard tray for each of the five workstations. That's a personal preference, if it works for the, her department, doesn't matter to me. So if there's no issues with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the keyboard trays for the five workstations.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Narodowski. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye, motion carries. All right, metal cabinets. I think we've only been talking about this for two years, Connie, so we're right on top of it. All right, so four, I think, so instead of five, there are four, four drawer metal filing cabinets that we'll include in the move. I think that's one of the few things that we're moving with. They're here, they're coming with us.
That's five or four?
That's four.
Four, yeah. What we were doing was three of the larger, or three of the smaller, two of the larger. But what we were trying to do is make an accommodation for our Sidwells. Because at that point, we didn't have a place for them. And so now that is gone, we can get rid of, you know.
You don't need to move the file cabinets?
No, we are still moving, but not as many.
Instead of five, four.
Four, oh, okay.
So is, you don't need to vote on this, though, do you?
What's that?
You don't need to vote on this?
Trust me, Connie and I need a vote on this.
All right.
We've been, 18 months we've been going back and forth on.
I make a move to move four metal file cabinets.
All right.
I have a question.
Fantastic, yes. Hold on, hold on.
Shut up.
Hold on a second. Is there, hold on, there's a motion. Hold on, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Graffia, please, go ahead.
Are these things nice looking, Connie, or are they all beat up?
No, we're taking the best of the lot.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
Read the next line.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye.
Motion carries. My understanding, based on our meeting this morning, the resource room will negate this item?
They'll still need placement for the file cabinets we have. But I would think at least two, if not three, would be going in that room and therefore would not be necessarily offensive to the color scheme that's going on in the rest of the office. But I never did see a quote on what the painting would cost.
I have not seen a quote either.
I mean, obviously, the file cabinets are not the same color as what is going on throughout the building.
But isn't everything rather, are they fire engine red? Lime green? Isn't everything kind of sort of neutral?
It's a neutral color.
They're not gray, but they're beige. It was suggested by Vivian that they could be painted to accommodate the color scheme. So we were simply, I said, I'm fine with that if, you know, depending if it's, it's cost effective.
If someone's hard pressed to search this out and make a motion, if not, we'll bypass it. If it's, if you're, if, if someone wants to move forward, I'll entertain a motion. If not, I mean, we can bypass it, it dies, we can move past it.
So we're not going to paint it?
No, it depends, what you guys want to do.
The motion, it's on the floor.
I guess if we're spending all this money on this nice color thing, why not paint a couple cabinets together with it?
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Can we at least wait until, because, can we at least wait until see if they clash?
They don't, they, I don't, I, if, you could go look at, they're neutral.
Well, I mean-
They're not going to clash, they're not going to clash.
Beige, yes. Beige, there's a joke there.
They're inoffensive, but when we were discussing things with Vivian and we were talking, in a couple of look for the office that everybody could be proud of. You know, it was suggested they might stand out.
That was suggested as well.
Never mind.
It was suggested that, that instead of buying new, you know, cabinets that we would need to store various items, that that was an alternative.
Should we wait and see if they're offensive?
We could, we could take a recess and go look at them now. I mean, they're really-
But how would we know if they're offensive without seeing them in the new building?
Right.
Because, because you see, I mean, yeah, we could show you the color board. I mean, yeah, you could, yeah, I mean, it's, they're nu, they're, they're neutral beige filing cabinets. But I mean, we could wait and have them painted later if you wanted. It's, I, I'll, it's up to the board, whatever you want.
Why don't we just table it for now and see?
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's two.
All right. Well, if someone wants to table, item six, paint metal filing cabinets.
A motion to table item six.
So seconded.
Moved by trustee Saturn, seconded by trustee Narodowski. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the 50 inch monitor. This was previously discussed for a couple of different purposes on that back north wall. To, you, you have the staff and the assessor's office utilize Sidwell maps to be able to use them electronically, show taxpayers that, but also presentations to project information as well, right?
But that was, that wasn't a-
We discussed it, we never took a formal vote on that, yeah.
Yeah, there are PowerPoint presentations that are done.
Yeah, no, I understand. I thought it was a part of the bid.
No, so. Any questions about this, concerns? Can I have a motion to approve item seven?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Narodowski. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by trustee Keenley. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Did you have those costs, Paul?
No.
She hadn't sent them?
No, they're not, no.
Okay.
If I can, you know, like I said, I, I, if we go back, the minimal cost increase, I don't even think there is one. I mean, there would be one, I don't know how substantial. But I think to find common ground, and since it was discussed as potential common ground, instead of a box box file, I think the common ground, just go, instead of those two boxes, you make that a second file. Do two files, one above, one below. And then if plenty of, I would hope, filing space. I mean, I think if that was common ground that you discussed with Vivian, I can get on board with that common ground. I just think two lateral, two lateral files for four workstations is a little much with the five, with the four filing cabinets that we're coming with, so.
That's not necessarily worth it. That's been tabled. So we're still out in the other half?
No, that's the painting, no, we just painted the table.
We just tabled the painting.
This is just a painting, we approved the four to come off, yeah.
So you're saying you want a file file instead?
I would, I would recommend, like I said, that was, it appears if I'm, if-
It's more convenient, everybody at the workstation has the same applications. And everything is, so the workstation is a uniform workplace throughout the office.
So what are you suggesting then?
I, instead of, instead of the two, two laterals, instead of having, in the bid, it was a box box file. So two drawers and then a file cabinet. So, and all in one, all in one column, or however you want to say that. So instead of having the two boxes, which would be drawers, that's what they, it would take out those two boxes and make it a second filing cabinet. So you have a file, a file drawer above, a file drawer below, in the same column. Same, wouldn't take any more space, but you're just taking out your storage for whatever you use those boxes for and make it a file cabinet.
On your agenda, on your agenda, under I, it's a second option.
What's that?
The lateral is a file and a file.
And I think even more than that. And we could make, it's custom, so we can make it as wide as you wanted, but, you know.
This file file would work?
No, I was just saying, trustee Graffia, you, it's the second option under a I, yeah.
So it would be, it would be one on top of the other?
Correct.
Instead of one next to the other?
But it would be, yeah, it would, right, correct.
So is it a savings? Is that why we would do the file file instead of the two drawer lateral?
You wanted all five? That's fine with me, doesn't matter to me, yeah. So it's so-
Again, it's uniformity, but it's also depending on if we have temporary workers in on a reassessment that we've got funding for.
Who, who had a question? Trustee Saturn?
I just asked if the file file option is less expensive than the two drawer lateral.
From my understa, I didn't, we didn't have a price on the lateral. My understanding from, is going from the box box file to the file file was negligible because you're essentially, you're building one drawer instead of breaking out into two.
But the lateral would cause, cause the desk to be somewhat wider.
No, it would just, it, on the return, you would just have more space taken up underneath with, with additional file space. So you would go wider under, you would go-
So it would be a longer file on your file.
You wouldn't go deeper, you wouldn't go deeper, you'd go wider. Under the return. With the two drawer laterals, right. So I would make a motion to, for the five workstations in the assessor's office to change those workstations from a box box file to a file file. That's my motion.
Four or five?
Five.
Five.
It's five, okay.
So that would include Connie's office. I just made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Graffia. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I think that is everything. On the new business, you have 2020 property and casualty workers comp insurance. Just so you're aware, I wanted to, and we can, we can approve this, I have no problem. I enjoy working with Mike and this company, it's been great. But just in the interest of being open and honest, a, a company did come in last year, wanted to know what our renewal year was. This year, they came back and wanted to quote. I said, that's fine. So just in the, we just had the meeting on Friday. So I hadn't had a chance to package it all up and get it out to you. So just in the interest of being open, I wanted to have, have an opportunity to get the board that information.
What's our deadline on this?
So if we approve, property and casualty is not as strict, so we could approve it at the November meeting, it'd be fine.
This would be, you're tabling in order to see a competing agency?
That's correct. So if I could have a motion to table this issue until the November meeting so that I could get the other quote to the board, so you can at least consider it. I just, I just wanted you to be able to see what's out there. And I think it's good from time to time to see how our current company is doing for us. But it just so happened that the company did come back and they put in some work and I think it's good for you to see. So that motion's on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Saturn. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item under new business is a resolution 2019-09, the authority for the supervisor to approve loan documents for 600 Land Meyer Road, the headquarters project. So this is the formal resolution bas, and authorizing me to sign the documents. So you've had a chance to review that. Are there any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution 2019-09.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Keenley. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Saturn. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley, supervisor Sweeney. I saw you move your mouth.
You've got to be quick.
That cadence threw me off, I don't know what happened there. Motion carries. All right, the last item here, resolution 2019-10, the 2020 trip transit grant and service agreement. That's just all the usual stuff. Just, you're just renewing our commitment, our engagement in the program, so. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
All right, moved by trustee Saturn.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Graffia. Any discussion? There it is. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.